So, you make sure to get Chelsea Shipp. She's bad. I sent her some kind of email that I had to do. And then I got an office reply. My office.
Were you up for more?
I tried to call you. Apparently you're screening your calls now.
Let's go ahead and call up meeting to order. It's Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
You got breakfast.
Breakfast. Minutes from reports received and filed.
Yes, accepted.
Hey!
Bailiff, have him removed.
Send him to the principal's office.
Yes, September 2017, we have the auditor, treasurer, and chairs reports filed.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Planning Commission meeting tonight. Solid Waste Management District Board meeting tomorrow. Home Builders Association tomorrow night. Chiefs Association Thursday night, Eastside. Coffee with the Renegades Friday morning. Special Olympics opening ceremony Friday night. We have radio on Friday.
Yeah, and John Marsh said it, he said, "We haven't had Chris on, or Chris, haven't had Jeff on for a while," so he requested your presence.
Oh, yeah, on Friday, the 13th.
Yeah. He really did. I called him to make sure we were on. He said, "Yeah." He said, "I think it's Commissioner Helscher's turn."
I don't know. What was it?
That's this Friday?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can call in, too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the phone calls lined up. John Hot Dog will be all right.
I know you had.
All right, that's about it. Well, quarterly reports are due, I guess, Sunday, so we've got to do them Monday.
Yep. So, I had an EDAC meeting today, right now, so I'm missing that. That's Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting for MMRPC. And then there's opening ceremony at Special Olympics on the 13th at 7:00 at Elias. You guys have it?
Yep, 7:00 PM.
And then I got that JDIA AI Juvenile Meeting Monday at 11:00. County Commissioners Breakfast, 8:00 AM Tuesday.
Yep.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Okay. I've got CAP Region Executive Board meeting tomorrow. Thursday, Traffic and Safety meeting with Donuts. Special Olympics Saturday night, the NAACP Gala Dinner.
So, what do you get?
That's all I have. Okay. Presentation from staff, consultants, invited guests. Missouri Employer Mutual to present a grant award check to EMS by Jennifer Gurle.
Hello. I want to give this check to Mr. Johnson. He filled out a grant, safety grant application, which their hunters come in and they randomly pick them based on how he spelled the application and what they're for. It's for paracobs, which is going to help eliminate back injuries for work comp. So, congratulations. And here's a tip for 20,000 dollars. But we do appreciate it. Not everybody will take the time to do that, and he did, which will save the county some money. So, thank you.
Do a picture. Do a picture for, well, they got a Facebook page, too, so.
Yeah.
Debbie, you're official photographer, right?
I just take my good side. I'm sure which side is.
Make me look fat. Sam, you should do a selfie with them, too.
No!
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Jerry, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, apply for more. We...
Take long, you lost that check.
Jefferson City CVB to discuss Missouri State Track Meet and Field State Championship event. Been talking with Diane. I think this is a great thing, so come sit where you can speak into our... Mr. Duncan.
I brought some partners in crime with me. I might turn over to Steve Duncan. I also have Glenda Fry with the Athletic Events Committee, which is a committee within the CVB to help the sports tourism force.
Thanks, Diane. Yes, my name is Steve Duncan. Along with Glenda Fry, we are members of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Athletic Events Committee. That's a, a group of probably 30 volunteers, primarily business people, school administrators, coaches here in Jefferson City. We support the CVB in terms of attracting and retaining mostly sporting events, but we also focus on, on some special events. We're here today, the Missouri State High School Activities Association, or MSHA, is rebidding both State Track and the State Cross Country Meet. State Track is, is held the last two weekends in May. The State Cross Country Meet is hosted at Oak Hills on the first Saturday in November. These are two very significant events for Jefferson City and for Cole County in terms of effect on our economy. We are here seeking some financial assistance. We will be submitting our bids for both events next Monday, and we're doing everything we can to enhance the quality of those events, make sure that MSHA is aware that this is, you know, that we have the support of the full community. So, Diane is going to present some numbers as to just how significant these two events are on our local economy.
Thank you, Steve. As Steve mentioned, this has been a major event for our community. State Track has been in Jefferson City for like 41, 42 years. Cross Country has been here 41 years. So, it's almost a tradition that this event is held in the capital city, and that's where it belongs with it being a state championship. So, when we were looking at our proposals, we were looking to see how can we enhance this package for MSHA, because if it helps MSHA, it eventually helps the school districts. The CVB alone puts in about 20,000 a year for this event, for both of the events together, and the Athletic Events does about six, almost $8,000 for the event. So, we have a financial commitment to it, but we realize how important it is. So, for the two State Track events, it fills the hotels in our community for two nights in May, two weekends and two nights in May. Cross Country fills it for one night, maybe a couple left over on Saturday night in November, which is a great month for us also needing hotel business. And along with that, these folks are going into our restaurants, they're eating, they're buying gas at our gas stations, they're going into our retails and buying, because moms do come with this group, and we know that the women like to shop. So, there are some benefits to it economic-wise, and I know you all understand the sports tourism. I know you know it's important to our community. So, we're looking at this whole event, we've estimated it to be about 1.9 economic attendee expenditure. We know that's a low number, but it's what we're comfortable with out there, saying that this event brings to our community. So, what we're here asking for is a financial support for our package, because we want to enhance our package and make it as strong as possible. The funds that we would get from sponsorships are going to go into helping assist with the facility rental, and we also have to have ambulance service. So, as part of the requirements, an ambulance has to be on site the entire event. So, that does become pretty expensive for those folks. Last year, if you all were aware, the last event, we ended up being there from about 9:00 in the morning until about midnight because of the storms. Therefore, the ambulance had to be there. So, we're looking at ways that we can enhance, and that's one way that we thought we proposed to MSHA. So, I'm going to kind of stop, and if you guys have any questions, we'd be glad to, to answer those.
Well, I know it's good for our economy, because we, May is, is a big wedding month. And a lot of the teachers, as soon as school's out, they get married about that third weekend in May, and they all think they can find 20 hotel rooms for their out-of-home guests, and then they'll, they'll come in, they'll go, "There's not a hotel room to be had in Jefferson City." And it, it really does, Memorial Weekend, if you didn't have them here, our hotels would be ghost town. So, it's, it is a good time to have those people in Jefferson City.
Yes.
And, no, I think it's, I think it's wonderful.
And if you look at our location on the state map, we're right in the center, and a lot of the schools send people to the State Track Meet. So, you know, distance-wise for them to drive is very equal versus to going to another area of the state. You know, with some of the other events, not every school sends a team to that, but many of the schools do send teams to the State Track.
Well, I've been an advocate of the sports tourism events, and this is a huge one. It's a tradition. Been working with Chris at your office, and I hate to hear that he's leaving.
Yes, yeah, yeah. You guys think you may feel bad.
So, he mentioned that y'all would be having to bid it out, and I said, "Definitely bring it up to us." Economic development is where I would approach trying to get it out of the budget, so.
And the bid is for 2019 to 2023 is the five-year bid, so it would not affect until the '19 budget. And what we would need for our presentation on, on Monday is a letter stating your all's support to the community. And the way we're looking at this is that this isn't just a CVB event, this is a whole community. And we've reached out to the city, and they have come on as a financial sponsors along with the Chamber of Commerce Civic Progress Group. And so, we want letters to go in our proposal so that they see that it is a community-sponsored, supported event and not just a CVB-supported event. And yes, I am very sad about Chris Wilson, who was a great asset to our community, and we wish him the best, but ugh.
So, are some of the hotels and restaurants, are they supporting this as well, or?
Yeah, the hotels assist us with some rebates. They added on to pick it up, it's based on how many rooms they pick up. Not all the hotels participate, but the majority of the hotels do here in the community. So, we have a sponsorship from them. Restaurants, that's a very hard one to, to get them to come on board. They know it's important, but that's about as far as we get with that sponsorship. So, that's why we reached out to the chamber, knowing that many of the restaurants are members of the chamber, so this chamber is doing it on behalf of the membership and the organizations.
So, I mean, just a few questions. So, the two weeks at the state, two weekends of the State Track Meet, I mean, how, how much time is the, how long does that last? I mean, is it a Friday, Saturday?
It starts Friday, so they come in, they're here on Thursday night, and then they come in, they participate on Friday, and they're usually over by Saturday, by 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon.
So, it's Friday all day and Saturday all day?
Uh-huh.
And then the Cross Country is at?
Cross Country is all day on Saturday, so they come in on Friday night. And that is out at Oak Hills.
And obviously, there's a lot of volunteer involvement, both before and after. You know, we're setting up tents, you know, breaking down at, at the end of it and cleaning up. So, there's, State Cross Country, for example, we probably muster 200 volunteers from the community just for that one event.
And Parks and Rec takes a major lead on the Cross Country in providing the leadership out there for setup and just their staffing, and they do quite a donation of their time to that event.
For State Track, we, the Athletic Events Committee, provide lunches for all the officials and the volunteers. That's where the majority of our money goes. And we deliver them, provide drinks for them. So, we're, we've got a core group of people that handle all four of those days, delivering lunches.
I think our Lions Club's tried to help with Parks, too. So, you get a lot of, you get a lot of support from volunteer organizations, which I think is good.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's...
It's a huge event.
It's a community event.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, we're, I, I think a lot of the people, Jesse, you aren't aware of it, on Memorial Weekend, because that's, that's a weekend you either go look at cars or look at furniture. Those are, those are the two big things. We go to Jeff's and eat barbecue.
I won't be there. I'll be in the woods.
Or they're aggravated because we closed down the streets.
Yeah, but it's, it's, you know, it really does bring people in that otherwise, you know, it would be, it would be a very quiet weekend here in Jefferson City, so it's a good time to have them come spend money.
It is, it is. It is. And we know, we know there's going to be some stiff competition for this bid.
Yeah.
Columbia lost their basketball championships, and so I have a feeling there'll be a big, big factor in bidding.
With all the years we've had it here, we have to keep it here.
We have.
So, we, I mean, we really do.
It's a tradition, and we need to keep that tradition going.
So, do we need a motion? Do we let our support, or just, we'll get it together and?
Do you need a dollar number by Monday to put your presentation?
I don't need a dollar amount right now. You know, the event's not till 2019. I think for, if you could give us a dollar amount, it doesn't have to go in the letter, but if we could have a letter of support to go in the bid, that would be helpful, too. But financially, to be able to say this is the amount of money that we're going to be able to bring to the bid, I think is important, so I guess...
But we could basically kind of be creative, too, and say we give enough to cover the cost of the ambulance, but...
If you want to, put a max amount to be applied to that if you want to do it.
Yeah, that's, well, but it just, it would, you know, I would, I would think for all three events, you're...
Probably look at 40 or 50 hours total of ambulance time, I would imagine.
That's kind of, I don't know the ambulance bill. I don't, you know, we don't see that portion, no, but we just kind of estimate it in our heads, and that's kind of what we're, you know, even if you just do eight hours a day for the four days and then for the fifth day. About 40 hours is what we kind of estimate on this.
I'm, I'm supportive. I mean, we could ask Jerry to pull the numbers and, and see how many hours that they had in it.
I mean, if it's something you all want to do in, in support of, you know, the ambulance up to 40 hours, or...
Yeah, we might, we could just round it off a little, whatever. Yeah, but I mean, yeah, we want to, we want to, we want to support it. We want to be a part of it, so.
Thank you.
That says a lot. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, so, let's, we'll, we'll work for Jerry and then maybe try to get back with a, a figure.
I think it's more economic development than a lot of the other things we participate in, so I'd, I'd look at doing the monetary and ambulance in kind or pro bono, and Jerry mentioned something about that, but, I mean, we can't encumber this on future commissioners for five years. We can say what we're going to do next year. We can talk about that during budget time, but for now, we can do a letter of support and go from there and let y'all know what our intention is.
I'd agree.
Okay, yeah, we want, we want to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
She needs something by Monday, so when are we going to sign that?
Yeah, I will need it. If I have it by Thursday or the latest Friday.
Okay, Jerry will, Jerry will figure it out and we'll...
We don't even need that. We just need a letter of support.
I need a letter of support is what I need.
So, we can draw that up and Sam will do it right after we get done here.
Yeah. I might be tied up with Special Olympics on Friday, so I kind of want to get it done by Thursday.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we will do it.
Okay.
Quick.
Perfect.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I love you, Jess.
Do you have your typewriter here? His will probably be handwritten, so it might take a little longer.
Hey, I get thank you notes from my, my handwritten thank you notes. Commission comments, any bids and contracts, signing of agreement with CenturyLink.
Before we sign that agreement, if we could approve the sole source.
Thank you all.
Where's Ray's? That's right. Okay, then.
Come on, old man.
So excited. So, can I get this file reading?
That add? So, Jennifer ran the sole source for this addition that we need from CenturyLink, and there was no request, so I'd ask you to approve the sole source first.
Ditto.
Okay. I move that we approve the sole source with CenturyLink.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ditto? I'll sign a ditto. Okay.
Hang on, are we done with that?
Yeah, we're sole source, now we got the agreement to sign.
We're always so nice together. Can you come prepare for these things? You're holding a meeting up, Ron. Just teasing you. Like I said, we don't get to pick on you very often, so. Your birthday and...
This is all for the phone system, huh?
Yeah, well, it's, actually, it's for the network, entire network infrastructure, so just to let you know, these two devices handle the entire communication for the county.
Okay.
Project name, switch replacement.
So, this is for software and phone?
So, this is for, you would think of it more along the lines of data and phone.
Data and phone.
Right.
Okay. So, not a techie guy, so you got to bring us down to layman's terms, but anyway. So, we've kind of been with CenturyLink for a long time, and we keep having problems with some of these servers and all this stuff, and it seems like it's a hodgepodge and a mess. And now, we're getting ready to do more with CenturyLink, and, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we've just approved a sole source. Surely, there's got to be other sources out there, but is that a total redo of the whole system, or, and I'm just asking questions, so.
Yeah, so, okay, so, so like, the best way to describe it is, is since we're a, we pretty much run a Cisco environment, Cisco network, anything else like that. So, and the way the phone system is, is everything's real proprietary. So, in order to get it to communicate to the phone system we currently have, it requires these particular cores running a particular protocol. So, these particular switches or cores, as we call them, would go into life at the end of this year, and so there's no more support, and then there's also no more updates for them. So, in order to be compliant, keep the firewalls up to speed and stuff like that, there's really, it's either replacing these and kind of keeping going with it, or switching out the whole thing, and I just don't know that we're ready to do that entire phone system thing at this point. This does not limit us to that, looking at that in the future, just to let you know.
So, this is just upgrading a few of the things that are into life?
That's right.
Two of the servers, or?
Two of the, actually, just, it's, it's more like, we're like...
Switches?
Yeah, switches or concentrators, you know, where it's pretty much where everything plugs into.
Okay.
So, but yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. I know Sam's real techie, so he's reading the agreement.
Well, yeah, we tried to switch out the system. I'd hate to see what that would cost, so.
Well, you know, technology will change again in a couple of years, too, or at least it'll, it'll morph into something, you know, maybe even better, but as it stands right now, with the phone system that we have, and protocols are nothing more than languages, so computer language, and so in order for the phone system to talk, it requires a particular language, especially this one. And so Cisco has that. Since you have a Cisco phone system, you got to pretty much stay with that Cisco core. Now, there are multiple people that, out there that sell that particular core, but since CenturyLink does the bulk of our, whenever we have issues, CenturyLink's here in town, and since they do the bulk of our work and they make everything work together, it only makes sense to keep those particular items with CenturyLink, so. And then we are looking down the road, you know, as far as upgrading other switches, but, but maybe using, you know, something that's still supportive but not as expensive, so.
And it accepts Jeff's language.
Absolutely. It all fills for me.
Yep.
Any motion?
Or did they already?
I move that we sign the agreement with CenturyLink.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Renewal of annual contract with CCHD Nurse Practitioner.
Hello, this is just starting to renew with Heather Hines, who's the nurse practitioner we've contracted with to do the women's family planning services. She comes every other Wednesday right now. We just play her a flat rate for that.
Good?
Yep.
Okay.
I, I move that we renew the annual contract with CCHD Nurse Practitioner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid award 2017-36, 2018 NVRA Canvas of Voters.
You guys should have this attachment. We received an offer from one vendor, and they broke it down by active voters, and talking to Steve in his office, we'd be focusing on the 50,000 active voters and then the corresponding cost estimate of $19,329.86.
So, what are we looking to do here?
It's our postal canvas, we're required by law to do it every two years. Everybody gets a new voter ID card.
Okay.
So, this is Rice and Company put, they were the only ones that bid on it. I think we used them in the past. Marsh used them several times.
So, we're just getting new voter ID cards to all the current people that live here, or?
Correct. Yep. Every two years, we have to do it.
I guess all the registered voters?
Correct.
In Cole County?
Yeah. Yep. Updates our files and then get some all-new cards.
I know the last time, I don't know, maybe it was two times ago, Steve, I don't remember, but I know some of, on those cards, there was an issue with the barcode or something?
Correct.
Have we gotten that corrected?
Yeah, we went back to a different style of card.
Okay.
Yeah. It was a real issue.
Yeah, I just remembered that, and I just want to make sure that we go down that road again, so.
Yeah, we changed them back.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I was good.
Mm-hmm.
So, we got a contract then?
Not today.
Not today?
Right.
Just, do we need to approve the?
Just have to approve it. I guess it'll go in next year's budget.
So, the whole amount will be in next year?
No, we have budgeted some this year. We'll do 5,000, come close to 5,000 this year, so.
So, we'll need to encumber the portion of what's in this year, and then what is the amount of next year's?
But there's no contract, I guess, so.
You guys will have to figure that out. I move that we award the NVRA Canvas of Voters to Ever J Rice Company Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, bid award 2017-35, pre-owned. I scratched that out. I put red Corvette. I think it's Riley Chevrolet, so I, I think it was just a typo.
Must have been. My, my bad. They actually, we received one response on this from Riley Chevrolet, and they actually offered a new one as opposed to a used one. That's what they had available, and it comes with three-year, 36,000-mile bumper-to-bumper, five-year, 60,000-mile powertrain, two years of free maintenance, and then you can see the price reflected at the bottom, $32,956.
Okay, what, what is this for? Who's this for?
Transport van. It's within, it's in our, you approved it for our budget this year.
Approved buying a new one?
No. We approved, we approved to buy a, a van. We were going to get a used one, the new one is just a, a nicety.
Okay, and so are we trading in the other one, or?
No, we're going to keep it on the road. So, it'll be 32,000 for this, and then we'll put another, I don't want to say for sure because it's a state bid, but I think it's 15 grand to put a pill in the back of the, in the back of this for transport.
So, you got to outfit it?
Yes. Again, that's all within our capital improvements. Again, that's all within our capital improvements.
What did you have in capital for that?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head.
Are you looking that up, Debbie?
How many miles is on the old one?
I think it's right at 190,000, 180,000.
So are we making, are we charging enough on these transports to cover the costs here, or...
Some, uh, we don't, sometimes we get paid, sometimes we don't. I mean, sometimes it's just part of the transport. It's one thing that we're, we're having to increase, and another reason why we wanna get another van is that we're gonna be transporting more federal prisoners back and forth to the courthouse, so we can use the old van for that. Still in pretty good shape for as many miles we got on it. It's all highway miles, and then, we'll be able to put this newer one on the road, start doing round robins to St. Louis, Kansas City, Springfield, wherever we have prisoners.
You got, you got personnel to drive it, or...
Mm-hmm.
And, the old one, I guess, is in the Sallyport, so where's this one gonna be going? Just somewhere in jail?
Uh, we'll park, the one will stay over, probably the new one will probably still over at the detention area, and then, the other one will park in the basement of the, of the courthouse, I mean, of the law enforcement center.
What was in the budget was 40,000 for jail van. 15,000 plus this 32, but then, some of these other things may have been under, so...
So 15 plus the 32.
That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be 12 to 15,000.
Well, you're actually, cost of the van is almost 33, 32, 956, so...
What we did last year is we, um...
Debbie's rounding down like my wife.
So we'll get, uh...
Another good reason not to be married.
The last time we bought this van, it was, they were a lot cheaper, the used one was a lot cheaper, we got it a lot better deal, so, that's what we based it on this time. But it's well within, I have it within my capital improvement funds to be able to buy this without having to come for any extra money.
But that's a new one with warranty and everything else?
Yep.
There's a lot to be said for that.
Yep.
Till you get over 36,000 miles.
Till you go out the parking lot. If you got the money, I don't have a problem with it, just don't come to us asking for the Jeep tank, okay?
You seen that?
Don't want you and Mr. Hill talking anymore?
No, no.
Or being Facebook friends?
No.
Because between that and red Corvette...
The Jeep tank, it's $178,000, but it's got infrared windshield, so...
Oh yeah, we'll race you in it compared to that bit. You pick the first 50 miles, we'll pick the second.
So, the 12 to 15's gonna outfit the inside, and then, you got decals, and you got lights, I mean, does that all come in at 12 to 15, or are those all...
No, that's just for the, that's just for the, the pill that fits in the back of the van.
So what do you got in signage and lights and radios and...
That'll come from the new car account, I, I don't, I don't know, we, we have the money.
You're coming, coming out of a, a different account for that stuff?
From, for the capital improvements, that's correct. It'll all be capital improvements funds.
All right.
It's a got wheels, right? Oh, you wanted to have a battery, okay.
I still like the red Carvetts.
I understand. I'm working on that for you, Sam.
You need another 50 grand, dude.
Well, but this says pre-owned, so I figure, you know, 32,000, 33,000, I could find a pre-owned.
Well, I didn't think you'd want a pre-owned one, I figured you want a brand-new one, so I turned the, they offered me one for $10, and I turned it down, 'cause I didn't want a pre-owned one.
Now, that was the brink of the hand. I don't think I would...
We'll get you a red Corvette instead.
I move that we approach, approve the purchase of the cargo van.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business?
I do like that Jeep though.
It is, it's way too much.
Let's test drive one?
Unfinished business?
Yeah, you gotta keep moving, saying new's lost now.
New business, accounts payable review.
Ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of sole source 2017 SS09 Vest System.
That's what I came to you guys, we talked about once before already. It's just a sole source approval.
And who was the company that we approved on that?
TYR Tactical.
Okay. I move that we approve the sole source agreement with TYR Tactical.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Come talk to me afterwards, we'll get the court that night.
Approval of sole source 2017 SS10 CenturyLink routers.
That's the one we did whenever Brian was talking about the CenturyLink contract.
Okay. Already done.
Already done. Okay. Meadowbrook Estates Stormwater Improvement Project Supplemental Agreement Number One.
Okay, I got two items on the agenda for the deal with stormwater. The first one is in Meadowbrook Estates subdivision, and we're currently have a project to design, really, the whole, it's a rebuild of the whole subdivision. Primary purpose is stormwater repair, replacement of facilities, pipes, inlets, large crossroad pipes, actually with box culverts. But also, the, the side benefit of this is the streets are in pretty bad shape, too, so we rebuild the street at the same time. Since we're gonna be tearing up the street with the stormwater work, we take care of the whole thing at once, so as not to inconvenience the residents any more than we have to. We do them as a full, full-scale project, a one-time thing. So, Meadowbrook Estates, that project is well underway in design. We actually have easements out to property owners, there's about 28 or so out, or 28 or so we have to obtain from property owners. We got more than half of those out, we're working on the rest of them. There's a few things we had to do during the design, we added to the design due to things we encountered along the way, and I'll give you a list of those items. And you got a visual that I handed to you, so you can kinda follow along. On the first page, kinda in the middle, bottom, there's a box culvert, and there's two sanitary sewer lines that run underneath that location, and we have to relocate those, which required additional design work to do that. There's a gravity line and also a force main that has to be relocated, so that's one item. Another item, kinda on the top, a little bit to the right of that page, there's some drainage ditch work that we added to the project to do grading, not a whole lot of work involved with that, but we have to make sure that that drains properly. It's on the first page.
I've got four pages, I don't know which one's first page.
The staple, the, the aerial, yeah. The staple handle.
Which is the top right? Do I gotta turn it like this? Cause I got it upside down, I didn't see that.
No comment.
Sorry, Eric.
Little drainage ditch work we have to do, we added to the project. If you turn the page on the second sheet, Cheryl Drive, if you look, a lot of times we get into, as we're developing plans for these projects, we get into a lot of curb and gutter, where the profile is way off, and there's a lot of additional work we have to do to, to adjust those profiles, to make the, the road ride properly, and basically build, build it to where everything fits in there like it needs to be. And there's a lot of driveway work that that entails, to make sure driveways get put back in the same manner that they are, you know, try not to make them any worse than they are, so, a lot of work involved in that. And then, also, not on these sheets, on Courtyard Drive, that's the concrete street where we're gonna be getting into some concrete replacement, there's a little stormwater work as well. So, to summarize, this supplemental agreement amount added to the contract that we need to do is $19,517.50, which makes the total contract 106,431 even, and we would like approval of that supplemental agreement. Any questions?
So, I'm just curious, the, the total project, is it to replace all of Cheryl, all of Allison, all of Meadowview, Chris, Christine Road, and Lake Valley Road, or are we replacing all that?
Allison Drive, Lake Valley Drive, yeah, complete replacement of those streets.
So basically, everything that we see here on these two pages will be, the road will totally be redone, new curb and gutter, asphalt, and all the stormwater and incidentals?
Everything, the whole nine yards, complete, basically complete rebuild. What doesn't show on this, there's additional parts of this project, and that's the courtyard drive, it's a concrete street, and then, also, part of Lake Valley Drive is concrete. If you look on that first sheet, you can kinda see it ending, the work that we're doing, but we're gonna utilize that concrete in place, it's in good shape, so, that's additional to the project that doesn't show on those sheets, these sheets.
What's, I mean, I realize we've added some more here, but what's the project estimate?
I should've brought that. We budgeted, I wanna say it was about 1.6 million, may, may have been 1.8, and these are just, it's 1.6, okay. These are basically very, I'd say, pretty good estimates, I mean, things change as you get a little closer in final design, right of bid, but should be pretty close. So, I mean, in the great, big scheme of things, the, the total design cost is within what we'd normally see with that scale of project. And, and a lot of times, we, we try to be on a little bit of the high side on design, that way, we can, there's a little room to do additional work that comes up if we need to add it, and then, also, it's, we like to come in a little bit under, save a little money in the end, and we don't like to come back with supplemental agreements, we don't do them very often, but in this case, there's some things that added that were well, well beyond the original scope and intent, so we felt we needed to do that.
You guys got any questions?
With these types of projects, it's kinda like a remodel on a house. You don't know what you got until you get into it and uncover a lot of it, and that's what we found, some of the storm or the sewer relocation and items like that.
I'd just comment that you all have been good at making sure we have plenty in there to kind of catch these kinda things, 'cause you almost always know there's gonna be some overage there, so...
Good, Sam?
Yep.
I move that we sign the supplemental agreement with Bartlett and West for the Meadowbrook Estates Stormwater Improvement Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My God. Like the flags.
Speaking of flags, you know somebody who was still half-staff yesterday?
I know, I know.
See?
Southbrook Drive Stormwater Improvement, Phase One, Agreement for Professional Engineering Services.
Okay, this is a new stormwater project, and there's actually two phases of this that we're gonna start design on. We're gonna say Phase Two for next year's budget, but Phase One involves a pipe that actually is collapsed and yards are falling in, sunken in, and we need to get going on that right away, possibly get it designed really fast and start work this winter. It involves a couple inlets, a pretty good-sized pipe, actually, four inlets, a pretty large drainage area that has to be analyzed to make sure everything gets put in there like it should, and then, a pretty long run of ditch that needs to be graded out completely to get it to drain. When we were out there, the ditch is completely grown up, and you can't see anything, but fortunately, utility company was doing some work at, behind the yards there, and the existing pipe is about half-full of silt, so, a lot, a lot of issues out in our Westview Heights area. We've done some work on Bagnell Drive, quite a bit of that done already, but we're, we're kinda catching the lower end now and starting on South Brooks Drive on the east end and kinda moving towards the west. So there'd be several phases involved with the total rebuild of all this out here, but Phase One involves just the area near Shady Lane, and the amount of that contract is $26,089. Even, and we'd recommend approval of that. This, these, these two locations, Phase One and two locations, we had some issues with the, the rains we had earlier in the spring, pretty big issues, actually. Not so much the year before, the real bad floods we had back a little over a year ago didn't hit this area as hard, but in spring, either May or late April, we had a lot of problems.
So, where are we at here on South Brooks?
If you look at the aerial, this is just a printout of the actual contract, the scope, scope part of the contract. If you look at the aerial, it's, the road kinda going diagonal is Scruggs Station Road.
Mm-hmm.
And so this would be the first location off of Scruggs Station on South Brooks Drive. And it captures an area going all the way up, the drainage area actually goes all the way up to the Aki Development off of Old Roman.
I just know that we've done a ton of work out in the Westview Heights area, and of course, we're working on Share, and, I mean, obviously, some of these pipes and stuff need to be replaced, but it seems like we're dumping all this water in between Share and South Brooks, and, I mean, there's, that's a huge drainage area, 'cause I mean, even the water coming under Scruggs, I mean, it comes flying through there, and it's coming over the road there, and so, we keep dumping it to the ditches, I'm just, I'm concerned that the drainage area's gonna hold any more future development.
I'm not aware of any problems we've had on Tamanda Drive, that runs between South Brooks and Share, there's a box culvert there. I'm not aware of any problems that we've had there. Part of the issue here on South Brooks, these pipes are undersized, you know, way back when, not really designed, and then, they're in really bad condition, so that cuts down on the capacity as well, and we've had houses in these areas that have had water in them, and the, the pipes need to be replaced, they're beyond, it's beyond time, and so, we wanna make sure we design it that it's gonna be able to sustain a normal rain event, or, or usually on crossings like that, where there's a, a house that's close, or in close proximity, we design those on a hundred-year storm, the, the creek crossing. Now, the, the streets themselves, that's a little bit lesser storm on the pavement drainage, but the actual crossroad pipes, we design those on a larger storm. Actually, upstream of this, there is ultimately, in part of the Aki Development, there is a detention basin that will be built. It's not there in place right now. You know, if, if we could, we'd like to go out and do some more stormwater detentions or retention of, you know, different items like that, but in this case, there's really no place to detain it. These locations, you know, there could be future work above Scruggs Station, you know, ultimately, you could have some, some there, but in these, it's just, we gotta get, we gotta let it pass through without causing problems. That's on the hy, that's on the hydrology end of it, on the, just the structure side of it, we just have to replace the pipes, 'cause they're in bad shape. They have to be replaced. And inlets, the inlets are bad, too, and we design everything so it's more compatible. But yeah, I, I agree, Chris, detention would be the best answer to some of these issues, not just here, but everywhere. There are some spots we're looking at in the Apache Flats area that we'll probably be, be talking to you in the next six, six months to a year. We see some opportunities out there, but... Um, we see some opportunities out there, but right here, I don't really see much in this vicinity, we'd have to go beyond the subdivision to capture some of the water drain into it.
You guys good with this, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
We'll be spending millions of dollars in Westview for the next twenty years, aren't we?
Well, honestly, Westview, we've, other than Bagnall Drive, I mean, we, we do have the project on Cher, and that's another pipe failure, collapse, uh, Bagnall's been where we spent a lot more recently, but, um, we've kinda hit like the Rainbow Hills area, we've done, we've almost got all of that done.
Yeah.
Meadowbrook Court, or the subdivision by our shop, where we'll get it, it's out for bid right now, Meadowbrook Subdivision, we just talked about, that's a whole deal there, we're hitting these pretty good, um, it just takes a long time, a lot of these, this infrastructure's in bad shape, it's put in seventies, early eighties, and it's just time to be replaced, and we'd go in and replace it with, uh, pipes that'll last a lot longer than the ones that are in there now, and hopefully, won't have to worry about it for a long time.
Yeah, we'll get all this done, then we can start looking at other areas.
It's just moving on to the next one, get one done, move on to the next.
Yeah.
We've been doing a lot the past ten years. There's a lot more out there, though, too.
Yeah.
So, are, are you looking to award this to someone, or?
Um, I didn't even mention, sorry, uh, Bartlett and West is the engineering company.
For?
The amount is twenty-six thousand eighty-nine dollars, and it's for design, basically take it all the way to plans to be able to bid, and then some additional, um, time in there to deal with items that come up during construction.
So is this something that we bid, or with Bartlett and West, or we just approved another one with Bartlett and West, so?
Right, the other one was a supplemental, one we were working on, this is a new one.
Okay.
Yeah.
They've done work in the area, or?
Um, we really, that, this actual drainage area going into it, I don't think we've had anybody do anything yet, uh, further to the west, coming from a different draw, has been CNPS and did some work.
Now, what's our timeframe for?
Um, I'd like to have plans done ASAP, within a couple of months, and we'll kinda see where we're at budget-wise, we may have to do some of it in-house, uh, just kinda depends on where, where things hit and how the design shakes out and what, how big the pipe is, a lot, a lot of different factors, but we'll, we'll ha- we'll do something soon. Uh, getting late in the air is probably, probably be a next-year budget item, but it could be something we'll do, you know, start over the winter.
You got a contract, or?
I do, Sam.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Just for what, twenty-six thousand something?
Twenty-six thousand eighty-nine dollars.
Got an idea what this project's gonna cost?
Based on the two that we recently bid out and having a construction, I'd say in the vicinity of one-twenty.
For all that?
It can, it depends on, eh, we might do it in phases, um, it, a lot of it depends on what the design comes back, um, there's two pipes and, or two inlets and a pipe that drains into the side of one of the inlets, or drains actually in a hole, basically a hole cut in the, the pipe, and we'll, it's not gonna match with what the new pipe would be in inlet, so that's why we added the additional stormwater work to the, to the east of there. So depending on how the design comes in, we may build it in phases, or we may do it all at once, just depends.
Does that one on Cher Drive was, uh, eighty-some thousand, wasn't it?
Uh, Charm Villa was eighty, Cher was one-hundred-and-ten, I think.
All right, you guys got any questions?
No. To address this, she is up.
Yeah. Six.
I move that we, uh, I move that we approve the agreement with Bartlett and West for Stormwater Project Number Two-Oh-One-Seven-Dash-Two-Oh-Three-Dash-Zero.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna, we should, I'm sorry, Randy, I should have put you before we did this, but renewal of health, dental, life, vision, and optional life insurance for 2018.
You gotta bring us money like Jennifer did.
I know, I was just on stage.
I, I do, I do apologize, I really would have.
Oh, no problem.
I know you, you care about stormwater.
You all, well, you all got lots more going on besides health insurance.
I'm sorry?
Joe.
No, hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Commission, for, uh, glad to come in this morning and visit with you on the upcoming renewal of the group health insurance and the ancillary lines, uh, of coverage, uh, same as you mentioned, the life, vision, and dental, you wanna do the, which one would you prefer first, ancillary or medical?
It don't matter.
Ancillary's probably easier, so on the left-hand side is your, what we call non-medical ancillary coverages, so this is the life insurance, vision, and dental, we are with Guardian, uh, the insurance carrier Guardian currently, have been for a while, um, they are, um, still competitive, but we have marketed them out, um, and it's our recommendation to move to Sun Life, uh, Sun Life is coming in, uh, quite a bit lower on the life, basic life coverage that's, uh, provided by the county, so the first page you see there is the basic life, um, you'll see that the amount is fifteen thousand per employee, what the rates are per thousand, but as you slide over to the right, it gets to the, uh, annual premium, so while Guardian's not going up, um, the premium is twelve thousand four hundred, and Sun Life has came in with a very competitive rate with a two-year rate guarantee of eighty-nine hundred, so that is dollars, uh, that the county would save, and we do a lot with Sun Life as well, very good carrier to work with, so, any questions on the life insurance? Uh, right behind that is the vision, so both Guardian and Sun Life both work with BSP, uh, which stands for Vision Service Plans, it's the largest vision network in the country, and these plans are very similar as you go down through them, so we probably don't need to spend a lot of time on the details there, but when you look at the rates, again, currently we're at eight fifty-eight with Guardian and, uh, just under eight dollars with Sun Life, and, um, so some savings there. And again, that's a two-year rate guarantee, we're otherwise gonna be looking at another renewal with Guardian next year.
Okay.
And right behind that is the, uh, dental, and again, very similar benefits as we've, as you walk through those, just kinda looking at them, it's kinda apples for apples, if you will, and again, looking at a rate savings, uh, with a two-year rate guarantee with Sun Life, so it is our recommendation to move to Sun Life, and that would be communicated and, uh, communicated, uh, to the employees as we go through the open enrollment this year, along with the medical, to have them enroll in those coverages, and I don't know, Debbie, if you have any questions, your thoughts to that, or?
Good?
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, your employee, your employees that are paying for their dependents and stuff, it's money, money that they'll save. Uh, switching to the right side of the package, on your medical plan, uh, just a couple things high-level, there's a lot of, there's a lot of numbers here, but just as a reminder to the Commission, we left fully insured now several years ago, um, and just high-level, when you're fully insured, there's about four carriers out there anymore, so you have Blue Cross United, Cigna, and Aetna, and some employers just are not large enough to look at what we call partial self-funding, so they're just stuck with fully insured, and there is not really any pretty picture out there, we're still seeing substantial increases in the fully insured market, and the biggest thing I wanna remind you of, when you're fully insured, you're giving all that money to the carrier, they take the risk, and then you have a renewal, you know, a couple of months before your actual renewal date, generally, you're seeing an increase, and if you are getting an increase, even if it's a small single-digit, it's on that entire premium, so if your budget's, you know, two-point-five million and you get a five percent increase or a ten percent increase, and you go with that, again, that, all that money's going to the carrier, they take the money, they take the risk, and if you've been a good risk, they keep those dollars. So moving to partial self-funding has been really very good for the county, you're a shining example of why it works like it does, but on the top left, uh, this is your census, so these are where these numbers are coming from, uh, you have two-hundred-and-thirty-four employees, uh, employee onlys, eight employee and spouse, E plus S stands for spouse, E plus C stands for child or children, so you have forty-nine employees that have children on the plan, and six employees that have employee plus F, which is for family, that would be a spouse and one or more children, so you have two-hundred-and-ninety-seven employees, some of them have family coverage, and then when you look at, when you're partial self-funded, I call it partial because we have reinsurance to protect us, we really break apart all the pieces, so there's a lot of numbers here, and I'll walk down through that, uh, because there's really two areas, fixed cost, which are true dollars going out the door to have all, to have the plan set up and ready to be administered, then you have your variable cost, which is your claims cost, um, so when you, uh, look at the TPA, just going down the left, the, um, TPA is, um, UMR, but they use Sun Life as the, uh, reinsurance carrier, so the reason we stayed with UMR at the time we did this, um, was we, we retained the United Healthcare Network, so that's listed right below there, the nice thing about United Healthcare's network, it's the same network that you would be using if you were fully insured, so we think about that, when United Healthcare's on a risk that they're fully insured on, and they're taking the risk of paying the claims, they're trying to, they're trying to get very good contracts, discounted contracts with those providers to, you know, limit the amount they're paying, or tapping into that same network, um, so that's, that would be very consistent, and we're looking at, uh, you know, generally, we're in the fifty percent range on discounts, which is very good. Uh, right below that, we get into your, uh, first covered, coverage of reinsurance, which is your specific, uh, the carrier currently is Sun Life, uh, the best renewal is with Sun Life, and we also looked at another, we looked at the marketplace, um, QB E is just another option, just to show you another competitor, the contract is a twelve fifteen, and I'll highlight this again, it gets a little bit in the weeds, but you're, when you're fully insured, again, that carrier takes the risk, you just renew, and if you ever leave them, you know, they have to pay the run-out claims because you, they took the risk. On reinsurance contracts, we have, actually have to pick a time that you're buying that contract, and we're on a twelve fifteen, which means that there, this contract will cover all claims incurred during the next twelve months, plus, if we would ever leave self-funding, it's also covering the, the claims for a three-month run-out, so we've got what we call run-out protection. You all have a specific deductible of seventy-five thousand, and we raised that last year, it was fifty to seventy-five, so you took a little bit more risk next year to lower the premium you were paying, um, and it's just like raising your deductible on your car insurance, if you go from a fifty to, five-hundred-dollar deductible to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible, the premium's less, well, same thing as we get into the stop-loss premiums here. This coverage on the specific covers, uh, medical and RX, and the specific deductible is a reminder, is the amount the county pays for any covered member, uh, employee, family member, before the reinsurance kicks in and pays, so you're basically self-funding up to seventy-five thousand of any claim during that contract period, if it's a claim that goes over that, it's an eligible, eligible charge, it's eligible claim, the reinsurance carrier would step in and pay those. The third-party administration with UMR currently is at thirty-nine ninety-nine, they're asking for a small increase, uh, which we feel is very reasonable, um, so that's going to forty-nine-seven. This does include your network access, so there's no separate fee to use the United Network, our broker advisor fee is five ninety-five per employee per month, and that would, we're not asking for any increase there, it would stay the same. Utilization review and pre-certification is also done by UMR, so there's no separate fee for that. You have an aggregate premium, which is the bottom numbers we'll get into, but it's actually your, your, uh, umbrella coverage, your top-end coverage, if you will, and that's, uh, currently four-seventy-five, going to four-ninety-nine per employee per month. Uh, your aggregate also covers, that's ceiling protection, if you will, does cover medical and pharmacy, and the numbers I just went through, you can tell, are not real big dollars, so your biggest part of your fixed cost is your actual reinsurance premium, how much you're paying for that seventy-five thousand dollars of protection, that they, they cover claims that go over seventy-five thousand, you can see the four rates listed there, starting at sixty-nine ninety-seven, going down through the family rate, and then the renewal of that, so the sixty-nine ninety-seven's going to seventy-four sixty-six, but when you add up all of those fixed cost numbers, which is derived from your census up on the top left again, we're currently, we currently have an estimated annual fixed cost of, call it, five-hundred-thousand, four-ninety-nine, I'll, I'll round up, uh, like Chris likes to, and, uh, my wife would say four-ninety-nine as well. Um, he, so we're at five-hundred-thousand, we're going to five-twenty-six, and, uh, so when you think about your fixed cost, you know, our fixed cost is going up really very little, um, and that is the true hard dollars that we know we're spending, if we didn't have one claim next year, we're going to spend five-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars to have reinsurance coverage to protect the county for high claims, and have all your administrations set up for everyone that's administering that plan, so let me, and you'll see that the competing quote is five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, so obviously not as competitive. Let me stop with that before we get into the bottom numbers, does that, I know it's a lot to throw at you again, but, uh, we just touch base once in a while on this, but does that make sense, and is there any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, so, um, below here, some, some employers don't even buy aggregate protection, what it is, is a ceiling of protection, we recommend the county, uh, does continue to buy it, and most municipalities do, but what you're asking a, a reinsurance carrier to do is look at your claims, look at ongoing claims, what they expect, uh, the county's members to have next year, and give us a top end, what's the maximum you would have to pay before they would step in and start paying for the whole group as a whole, well, they come up with what they, uh, call expected claims, they add twenty-five percent to that, so they're, they're adding a layer in there, uh, what we call a corridor, and again, you're not paying a lot for that coverage, it's that four-ninety-nine per employee per month, so we're paying roughly maybe around thirty thousand in premium for the ceiling protection, well, what you're getting, what you're buying is right below there, it's, it's a twelve fifteen contract again, it covers medical and pharmacy, and it is a million-dollar insurance policy, so if you would go above your ceiling, which is this bottom-line number we'll get to, if you would breach that ceiling, you would have a million dollars there, the carrier would, would be on the hook now for the next million dollars, and that's why you're buying that protection, to have that ceiling. So how do they come up with the ceiling, it's actuarially, they're looking at your claims, looking at future liability, and then adding twenty-five percent to it, so you gotta remember, there's a corridor there, so we are seeing an increase here, but keep in mind that this is soft dollars, not hard dollars, we're not gonna spend this until your employees or members incur a claim, it's processed with a discount, uh, they pay their appropriate deductibles and coinsurance, and then the rest is presented to the county, but again, you're only paying up to the first seventy-five thousand, so currently, our estimated annual attachment point, our, our soft dollars, is two-million-seventy-thousand, it's going to two-million-two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, which is roughly about a seven percent increase, and then right below that, this simply adds your fixed cost, which we know is a hard dollar, to your estimated, uh, an- annual attachment point, your claims cost, to get you to your total maximum funding, um, so if we had, and the only, the only way you're gonna hit, so looking at the renewal, two-million-seven-hundred-seventy-four-thousand, when you look at, it's not one or two claims, because if you have a large claim, you got a million-dollar claim, you're only paying the first seventy-five thousand, then it gets, then it goes over to the specific reinsurance carrier, so you would have to have a lot of claims under seventy-five thousand that keep adding up and adding up to ever get close to your ceiling. Typically, never happens, uh, less than two percent of the businesses in the United States have what we call an aggregate claim each year, the county's been running extremely well, uh, you're, you're, have done a great job with, uh, your, your accounting, and Debbie working with everything, you've got obviously dollars in the bank that you're aware of, so the question then always becomes, oh, okay, how much do we fund? Because if you're fully insured, the carrier walks in and says, here's your premium, you gotta pay this, and we're gonna take the money and keep it, well, with partial self-funding, we know we have our fixed cost, and we have this variable up to the ceiling, it's just a matter of how much are you all comfortable funding into that, take into account that you have some reserves currently, so right now, our number, if you look at the total max funding cost, uh, currently was, on the employee side, was six-hundred-and-three dollars and nine cents, the county's currently funding about- The county's currently funding about $593. And so you're currently, and you all cover virtually all of, well, you pay all the, what would be considered premium or funding for the employees. That money goes in, as a reminder, you have two plans, a traditional plan, and you have a plan with a lower premium, that's a high deductible HSA. So that lower premium is given to the employees in an HSA deposit. So currently, you all are funding, call it $593, into your plan. Our max liability this current year was $603, but you ran very well, you get money in the bank. Our maximum liability is going to $650,000, which is about a 7% increase in soft dollars. So the question becomes, you know, do you change your funding or not? We're not recommending that you have to do that, because you've got a very strong account balance. But over time, you'll probably see this ceiling, the ceiling will continue to go up just with medical inflation. So at some point, you know, the county probably is going to need to look at funding more into the plan. Whether you all funded in as the employer, or whether the employees start paying part of that, obviously the employees pay for their, you know, the bulk of their dependence today, the county pays for some of that. So I might have Debbie elaborate on that, if I miss anything.
He's right. We did keep it at the $593. The actuaries, you know, if we were fully insured, what came in at that, around that $603. And with the renewal now, it's the $650. It's up to you guys whether you want to keep it or where we are doing it currently. And again, it's soft money, like Randy was saying, so we're really not sure what's going to end up getting paid out. We do have a nice reserve of that $650. You could take part of it, and the county could continue to pay for part of it, and then pass the difference on to the employee. Or we can look into keeping it where it is now, and in 2019, maybe look at some wellness incentive part, you know, like you'd have to, we would get it all established, and then you would have to by 2019, complete these certain acts for the county to continue to pay fully for your health insurance. Gives you options that way going into the future. It's kind of up to you guys how you want to approach it for 2018.
What do we need to decide today?
Basically that we're gonna go with the UMR and Sun Life for the reinsurance. And do you guys, whether you're, the answer?
Yeah, the, the life, the dental division would want to get a decision on it today. And then, I have a good question. Chris, on the medical, we do want to lock in the Sun Life renewal, because we're good, we don't have to do any more underwriting, but the longer it goes, they reserve the right, there'd be a big claim pop up, they could re-underwrite. So, so I think for the, today, it'd be deciding to stay partially self-funded with UMR as the TPA, Sun Life as your reinsurance carrier. What you all fund is the county's decision as you go forward. Of course Debbie will need to know that before we do any bully education meetings, if there's going to be a change. The only thing you might consider, and we've talked about it some before when we visited with Debbie, is, we're not suggesting you need to make a change, or if you wanted to bump it a little bit, and the county just continues to fund that as an example. Maybe you go to $600 or some amount, and the county is still funding it all. You know, most employees don't want dollars coming out of their paycheck for their medical plan, and it's still very nice the county's paying 100% of it. But what we might want to do is look at next year, during the first quarter, evaluate a wellness program. A lot of employers are moving into a wellness program. And if, the first year, we would recommend it not being something that people have to achieve a goal. It may just be a matter of doing a biometric screening, whether the health department does that, or it's outsourced, but all the employees are basically invited to do that. And if they do that, you know, the county continues to pick up the bulk, if not all of their premiums, 1-1-19. But if Randy says, I, I don't have interest in doing that, I'm not going to participate, it's my choice, but I'm going to pay something towards my health plan, 1-1-19. And going past that, you can always get into, you know, people having to meet certain guidelines, but the first step usually is, is really just more of a participation or not. But those are, that's an initiative we would want to start, you know, early in the year, maybe get some leadership with the county, help the department evolve, and, which you all done some of that already, obviously.
There is a one-hose committee that's been looking at different options, too.
So, I mean, I like the renewal with Sun Life. You know, I met with Joe and Randy here not too long ago, and don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but, you know, one of the things that I think we really need to look at strongly is the cost of prescriptions. And I know you guys are getting me some information on that, but the cost of drugs keeps going up, and the cost of the copay has stayed relatively little to nothing. And so, you know, looking at a percentage of, of the cost of the drug, or going to more of a, a fixed cost. So, you know, we could raise the premium, we could raise the cost of their copay on the drugs. So, you know, something that we have to decide, but, you know, the drugs keep going up in cost, and it's still costing the, the employees paying $10 or $15 copay. And so, you know, it's, it doesn't, if the drug's $50, paying $15 is pretty good, but if the drug's $800 and you're paying $15, well, that's, that's a pretty good benefit for the employee. And most people don't even know what their drugs cost, they just, they just go in and they pay 15 bucks. So I don't know how we transition to that, but there is a max on the, on the prescriptions. So once you reach your maximum, you don't pay anymore. It's covered at 100%. So just something to think about.
I hate this stuff.
You said that for you.
I, I mean, I think it's each employee's responsibility to try to take care of themselves and keep the cost down as much as possible as well, so I'd be interested in looking at the wellness thing. But I'd like to see the county keep paying for the difference, going from the $593 to the $650, right? Is that what I understood? I just, I think that's one of the biggest benefits of working for the county, aside from their three bosses.
I love it.
So, but we don't have to decide that today, we just gotta decide the renewals, so we can continue, and then the cost part of.
Probably next week, maybe, put it back on.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
It'd be next year's budget, right?
It will, but we have open enrollment, and people want to know what they're going to pay if they.
Why you wish wait till the last minute?
I agree with Jeff, so, I mean, it is one of the benefits that we, we give our employees, so I, I'd like to keep that, where we cover that. And I, I agree with Chris that we do need to look at prescriptions, because it's, you know, they, they keep coming out with new stuff now, and I've got a friend who has Crohn's, and they've got this new thing they advertise, you know, where you can give yourself shots. God, those shots are thousands of dollars. And it's like, you know, we can't, yeah, it's, but.
I, I think it's all, very wise of all of you, that most, most employees, and they've been, again, it's very nice that they're not paying for their plan, and it's been something, it's been very nice to be a county employee and have that. So I can tell you, just working with a lot of employers, I mean, they would rather, no one wants to pay more for any part of their healthcare plan, but if you charge someone, if you charge everybody a premium, everyone's having money coming out of their paycheck. And to pick on myself, if Joe and I are both on the plan, now we're both paying money out of our paycheck, but I'm the one who's utilizing the plan, getting prescriptions and so forth, a way to do it is to maybe look at the prescription plan. If I pay a little bit more when I go in and use the plan, so be it, still affects me, not belittling that, but you're seeing more, more plans moving to, to where the employees are a little bit more in tune to what the prescription costs. They're just not shielded to it from flat copayments. And we're working on some of that analysis for you all, so, but that could help, you could help shift some of the cost, because the members who use the plan are paying a little bit more at the time of service, but it's not coming out of their paycheck, if you will. So it'd be probably a good balance between that, so.
Is that the same time that we talk about emergency room deductibles, and trying to persuade them to go to urgent care if it's not a true emergency and stuff?
Yeah, and so, I mean, we have those copays in there, and we can review those as well.
I think we raise that up to what?
It's at 200.
200.
A lot of the groups that we have are at 3 now.
I was gonna say, I think that's something to look at, too, if that would help, so.
So we'll get, we'll get that free as well.
And we've had enough injured people, we can just keep reusing boots and stuff, you know, and crutches, and, and that'll save us a lot of money.
You didn't pay for these, by the way.
Oh, yeah, we're just, we, we'll reuse all of our.
There's up and keep cost.
Yeah, reuse all those boots and, I think we could have Larry, you know, I mean, he's got a chainsaw, you know, if it looks like.
Chainsaw.
Jerry, Jerry can look him over and, you know, say, well.
Make a quick assessment.
Yeah, we could.
Where are you going?
I don't think you're saving us anybody.
Cut his crutches down, make him fit for somebody, make their leg off.
Oh, well, you know, it's.
I move that we renew with Sun Life.
Thank you for keeping this moving, I'll second.
Call it favor.
On the ancillary coverages, moving to Sun Life there as the renewal stops.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you for making what, what sense.
I was watching a show on Civil War yesterday, and they just amputate.
You still watch MASH 2, huh?
No, this was on the. Dr. Benz could do it.
Thank you all.
Thanks, have a good day.
Okay, you guys just don't appreciate my sense of humor.
Oh, we do.
Change order approval, Randall Drive NID project. I liked NIP better, but we'll go NID.
You got the copy of this as well, Sam. Randall Drive is done, that project, the NID project. If you haven't been out there to see it, it turned out really well. We haven't gotten into the actual finalization of the NID itself, but the project is done, and we have to get final cost to Tony and Joy to do all the final stuff that they're gonna do. We came in a little over the original contract amount, and I'll give you these numbers. Original contract was $288,576.28. We came in over by $15,361.86 for a grand total of $303,938.14. And three, or, we had a, some of it was just due to overruns of quantities, which is normal. There's overruns, underruns, and it just shaped out to be a little over 2,000 on that, but then a little over 3, 13,000 on, some items that were added during construction. One was the addition of trackless tack. With that, we, we made a change with our overlays to add that into our contracts, but this project was bid before we made that change, and so we, we added it to this one. And what that does is just cuts down and actually almost eliminates the, the tracking of oil onto new driveways as they're laying the asphalt, the tack layer in between the two lifts of asphalt. The other item, another item was, one of the pipes, as we were replacing it, we encountered a sewer lateral that had to be replaced, removed, or relocated, and then some of the pipe run adjusted. And then two items related to a parking lot at 3712 and 3714, we had to do some additional work to make everything match in the way it needed to be. When we were designing, in design, decided to take some of that work out, thinking we can maybe make it work. We were kind of running a little high on our, our estimate at the time, and we needed to cut cost out, and that was one we cut out. But during construction, realized that that probably wasn't going to work out reasonably for the county and the property owner. So we made some addition there to that, and actually the property owner paid a portion of that additional work to make things match in on that parking lot. And then the last item, we had some concrete overruns on, primarily on some commercial concrete drive that had to be added to the, the contract in the overrun above. But due to that, there's some additional removals that had to be accounted for. So with all those items, that added up to the, the net change order, or net additional cost for the change order of that $15,361.86. So I'd recommend approval of this with Stockman Construction. And this would be the final closeout change order.
There were no additional days needed to complete the work.
That's correct. Any questions? What do we have, end of a contingency? The budgeted amount. We did cover it. Yeah. Where, it was right at 350, and design actually came in. Yeah, probably don't have it. Design, the design cost came in roughly. It covers it, though. Yeah, about $8,000 under what we originally estimated for design, so. It covers it? It covers it, yes. Yes, it covers it. More thorough than anybody, I'm sorry. I'm an engineer, man. Don't worry, it was the same way at Chamber the other day. So when are they gonna be done with the port study thing? Well, the preliminary, I'd say, no, done, completely done. So you know, you go on the radio and they ask about that, or a news trip, and you ask, December 31st, okay. Well, if you add stuff to it, it's gonna take longer, obviously. When do y'all plan to be done? Just shut up, yes, no answer. Run, Eric.
If you hadn't driven out there, you'd need to.
Looks real nice.
Yeah, looks, Stockman did a good job.
Yep. Good project.
Yeah, the road looks better than some of the units, so. I move that we approve the final closeout change order for the Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Approval of county investment policies. I'm gonna run, let me run to my office.
I got Stockman there, too. Actually, I just didn't get on the agenda till 10:00 yesterday. That's why I said.
I can read my mind. What page was yours on? This one.
Oh, yeah, the draft.
This one needs to come up.
Oh, that's totally intentional. Well, we got tables now.
So we've had a committee of Debbie, myself, Eric, Jill, and Sam meet to go over an investment policy for the county. We thought we were close, but we sent it off to Central Bank last week, and they called with some revisions, so I don't know that we're ready to approve today. We can kind of walk through some of those revisions if you want to, if you've read the policy, or if you have other questions that you want to talk about.
So I guess, what are some of the revisions that, is it in here, or is it in there?
I'll go through them. So on page five, under investment transactions, there's authorized financial dealers and institutions. We made sure that we have an Exhibit A attached, which lists Central Bank as the only authorized financial institution at the moment. Under there, there's listed that they will supply the following items. Central Bank cannot provide a proof of National Association of Security certification, so they asked that we take that out of there.
Okay.
Then I think most of their other changes is to the internal control memo that's attached, it should be the last page. And in them reading it, it's a little inconsistent with them being the only financial institution authorized to provide, provide investment transactions, because it says that we will consider other outside investment firms, and that obtaining the best yield is our priority, which it's not. And so they had a couple of revisions to that internal control memo to make it consistent with the policy. And, and then reading it, it's a little inconsistent with them being the only financial institution authorized to provide, provide investment transactions because it says that, um, we will consider other outside investment firms and that obtaining the best yield is our priority, which it's not. So they had a couple of revisions to that internal control memo to make it consistent with the policy.
So Chris, and they're gonna modify that last page?
Um, actually, I think Eric has the true copy of that last page. None of us have it electronic. We all have just a paper version of your internal control memo.
Right.
So if you can send us that, we'll make those adjustments to it.
Very well.
And then we'll be ready to bring it to you next week with, um, with those changes in there. It was just kind of a last minute on Friday and with the holiday yesterday, we actually didn't get back with Dave till this morning.
And then once this policy is approved, we need to sit down with the commission and maybe do some long-range planning and decide what amount of money we are comfortable with investing.
All parties are, will be good with the agreement once its provisions have been made.
Eric, did you have anything else that needed to be changed in the policy? Once we make those few changes, you're ready?
No, I don't have any additional changes. I was just wondering, uh, you all had been provided a copy of this before. You, you've looked at it before today. Okay, very good. Yeah, so our next meeting, we probably don't need to go through it page by page, section by section, right? That wouldn't be necessary?
No, we're just gonna make these few changes and hopefully bring it back to you next week.
And if you guys have any questions in between now and then, please let us know before we get answered maybe.
I, I will say real quickly that, I mean, the reason that we're here is Central Bank provided us a, an enviable yield for years. When I first became county treasurer, we were earning an unbelievable two point five-five percent on the first fifteen million, which is unheard of. They were expecting the Federal Reserve to raise rates. The Federal Reserve didn't raise them in two thousand nine or ten or twelve or, but they only raised them in twenty fifteen. So Central Bank underestimated at our benefit. But since then, since twenty fifteen, the Federal Reserve has raised rates three times and they're going to, all indications are, they're indicating they're gonna raise them again in December of this year. So, for example, our, our depository contract with Central Bank right now calls for, our yield is based on the three-month treasury, which right now is point, it's one point zero seven plus sixteen basis points. So we're at, we're at one point twenty-three percent right now. Uh, in twenty fifteen, in October, on the sixth, it was zero percent. In October of twenty sixteen, it was point thirty-three. And now we're at one point zero seven plus the sixteen additional basis points we get from the, from the bank. So rates are going up and it behooves us to invest the monies that they, in effect, they penalize us for anything over thirty million. Instead of giving us sixteen basis points, they take away fifteen basis points. So that's money we're leaving on the table by leaving those monies in our demand deposit accounts right now. And that's really, after all these years of, of not investing, why we've got a need for an investment policy so I can move forward on investing appropriately and capture some yield because of the rates are going up, which is good for the county to take advantage of that.
So just to clarify what you said, so anything over thirty million, they're penalizing us or?
That's my word. They, a bank, of course, wouldn't use that word BS, right, anything.
But they're taking away the yield.
Right, actually from third, right.
For the first thirty million, we get fifteen basis points above that rate.
Sixteen basis points.
Sixteen basis points. For anything over thirty million, we only get one basis point above it.
To thirty-four million and anything above, there's three pots. The, the first thirty, you get the three-month treasury plus sixteen basis points. Then there's the second pot, thirty to thirty-four, you get the three-month treasury minus fifteen basis points. And then anything above that is their overnight rate. They call it their repo rate, but it's actually an overnight rate determined by Central Bank. And right now, I think it's point twenty-five. So that's just ridiculous that we, we don't have anything over thirty-four. I think right now we're sitting right on about thirty-four million now. But in a year or two or three, if we had thirty-five point six, one point six is earning nothing, so, so.
I don't have any questions?
No.
Put it on the next agenda whenever it's ready.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
Nope, I don't.
Yeah, do we have some stuff that we need to?
Yeah, finally doing that other stuff first before we talk about the, I don't know, the wall maps and, uh, just other administrative stuff, so.
I think we oughta do the housekeeping first before we go into closed session so we can be done.
Okay.
Uh, unless they did send us a thing for the maps.
She have an attachment there?
There was four different ones, if I remember. I couldn't quite open it on my phone too.
We're looking at just the, one, four, three, two.
I thought we were just doing like those fat head type things or whatever. It was just like a Klingon type deal.
It is.
Right, but we're gonna do like one with the cities, one with townships or just do one map.
I thought we were talking two.
We were talking one countywide there and then maybe all the incorporated cities on a different one, bigger, because it becomes very hard to read.
So we're gonna do one like this or this or this and then we'd have one with the cities that are, well, out on the outlines on a separate map. But we gotta decide which.
The prettiest ones.
A pretty one like the Public Works has. It's all pretty colors.
Yeah, there was.
It's not about pretty. I really don't care which one we put up there. I think that one with the more color, just, it does look nicer. It's easier to disseminate between stuff if you're looking at it.
So I don't particularly care for the ones with the cities with, I don't know. It's just a lot of data and it's also small. I mean, if we wanna do the individual cities, I think we should do them by themselves or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Think that's kinda what you said, do one with the, just Cole County map and then the other, those cities that are broke out. Around the sides would be on its own map. That way we can make them, them bigger.
Do them individually? They'd be their own individual map, each city.
What else should be on one?
I think in one area though. Like they'd all be right there.
But you're not talking about like this, what enlisted sent us.
Let's see, the second one is just a county. And then the fourth one is, well, I thought it was supposed to be city. Yeah, it is cities only. It's got Jefferson City, which is probably three quarters of the, right? Do you see that one?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at them here. I mean, I just.
Which is mostly the county anyway. But a big old dot by LBS.
I mean, Eugene's not a city, so take that one off.
Yeah, it's all about tax to like your ass. Yeah, you can get rid of Eugene and Osage city then. They're not incorporated anymore, are they, neither one of them?
I believe.
So probably move both of them off there and might make some more room. I mean, there's, there's a thousand different ways to do it. But I think breaking those out and then you can blow up each area a little bit bigger.
But you think a, a map just like this that would lay over?
I'm curious how they would do that one though. Let them lay over, so I don't care. I'll give you a source to the way you wanna go.
Are you looking at her four that she has, Chris, that she sent you guys in that email?
Um, yeah.
To Google Drive, so.
Yeah.
So cities only, do you want that one, if I get rid of Osage and Eugene, to put right there? Or which one are you thinking of?
Now we still have issues in Eugene though.
It's not a city though. I mean, it's part of Cole County, so.
That'd be on Cole County map, yeah.
I don't know. If it was me, I'd only do one and it'd just be a Cole County one. I wouldn't do any of the cities. I mean, they're, they're all on there. It's just Cole County.
You can do that.
I can do that, but I'll add something to it later on. I can always.
Won't balance out the walls.
Are you an interior decorator or what? There you go. Put a parking squirrel up there.
Who moves the clock? I'll bring one of Jeff's, uh.
So we wanna do coal only with terrain?
That's fine with me.
This one here with the color.
Is that what the terrain is?
They're talking about that one. But that's the cities.
That one becomes hard to read if it was me.
But are we just doing the, the colored portion or is it gonna be the whole thing? Or is it gonna be like a, is that white gonna be a clear background that just kinda?
It was gonna be kinda like the wall color. We were trying to get it to where then the backside of that map would be the wall color so then the map would stand out more.
Yeah.
So you wanted without the terrain?
If you could make the white clear or something, so that the wall color would just come through, then it would match.
Yeah.
Because I'm afraid it's not gonna match and then it's gonna be a different white.
Clear wasn't one of the choices, so I.
Clear wasn't one of the choices?
Yeah. Yeah. So she, but we were in here with four different colors trying to get it, but you're right, once they print it, we don't know what that color's actually gonna be. But are you leaning towards one without the, um, terrain behind it? Becomes very hard to read, I think.
I guess just my thoughts is. Just the map itself. I mean, do you even need the legend or do you need any of that?
We can't get ours bigger. For some reason it's hard. Maybe I have to hit download.
That's fine. Just do it as is, get it done.
With the terrain behind it or without?
Just do it, just like this one shows is my.
Which one are you on?
Cole County with terrain.
So you want the dark behind it?
Yeah, I'm good. Yes, yes, yes.
City or just the county?
Just that one.
Just that one.
You only have four questions then.
All right, we'll go with that then. It doesn't, it won't have to be permanent because obviously, three to four years.
Put it up, we'll go, boy, we don't like that, but.
That'll be your fault, Sam.
Any more questions than Whitefield will start.
Hey, we're done.
Okay, okay.
What else we got?
What else?
You're gonna take care of the CBB letter then?
Yeah.
You might get a, they may have a template or a, uh, something we can just use. You know, three sign that in unless no one's done.
How do you, I'm gonna talk to Jerry and find out approximately what?
No, we're just doing a letter of support saying we support this project.
Okay.
That's all we need right now.
Okay.
The money part, we talked about, we paid budget. Kirsty had sent something about the Cole County park sign. Are we doing anything?
Yeah, okay. Um, so that was a thing of the, uh, cross-country group that uses the park out there and they put those statues out there. And so this was just a legend that they were wanting to put over by the, oh, it'd be kinda the, that little circle lot off of the County Park Road there, just to kinda explain what the difference.
It's kinda by the pavilion over there, right? Isn't that where the pavilion's at?
Uh, it's over by, on the other side.
By the picnic table?
Yeah, I, I don't know, like, a couple of different ideas, but, um.
They're doing it, right?
Yeah, they're, they're caused with it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just making sure what, what's going on with it.
That'll be on next week's agenda.
We drove by that yesterday. There's a lot of people that use that park. It really, it's, it's nice.
Chris, we'll make sure they know that that's not under our insurance in any way.
We had an agreement with the statues, I mean, actually a signed agreement between the commission and I think it's the Booster, the, Booster Club for the long-distance runners.
Right.
So perhaps we should do something similar.
They, they realize that if it vandalizes or whatever, it's their expense, but it's, I mean, it's one-inch plate steel, so somebody's gonna have to work at it to hit it with a car, they might not even dent. Anyway, we, we can amend the agreement or whatnot, it's fine. We got the salary commission meeting set.
Larry, you were just sending that pace information. It's just a lot of my stuff, right? We're already.
Yeah, we backed out.
Okay.
I just sent you that when I get it to the, reaffirm, like, backed out.
Did they ever take us off the, either sign?
I don't know, I have to check.
So I don't know if I told you guys, but the Sleep to America will not be able to be held at the Capitol for the next two years or something, so. Anyway, so they're looking for another location to do the event.
That's just the concert really, you want it?
Well, I mean, trying to find a central area to, to do a lot of that stuff that was around the Capitol, but yeah, mainly the concerts. But if you move the concerts, then, you know, you got the, uh, the beer gardens down there and some of the other things there too, so. Moves a lot of things.
Can't move the beer garden down here because we're too close to churches.
You would think so. I don't know where they're at with that.
So what are they gonna do on the fireworks? It's, everybody usually kinda sets up there on the north side of the Capitol.
Yeah, I don't know. Capitol grounds is gonna be pretty much off limits.
Okay.
They're working on it.
Oh, really, the MS?
So we, we still mate, waiting on, uh, Joe to get us something on this Russellville recycling place.
Uh, I got something from him on ten-five. He didn't get that one. That there, uh.
There's some letter.
Mike had went there and left a hang tag on there and.
Yeah, I got that.
I think we need to go ahead and do something with it too, because if. I think we need to go ahead and do something with it, too, because if DNR wanted to do something with it, they could. They pretty much plowed their way through wherever they want to do, when they want to. So if they wanted to do something on this one, they could. Somewhere along the line, it's getting held up, but they're trying to say it's a recycle center and they want to encourage recycling, but if it's just an excuse to. I don't know, it's just got a junk pile there. That's inside of Russellville, say, limit, I think.
No, no.
That's not inside? Yeah, I don't know where it's at, but I thought it was right on the inside of it, okay.
Say maybe Russellville High School have a bonfire.
I don't think it burned.
I was gonna say, I don't think it burned either.
Yeah, check with, now let me see what our council.
I gotta get through all these red eye gravy emails and stuff that somebody's been sending back and forth. Clean up my emails. I thought you had problems in weddings and stuff do all the time. You got awful lot of emails in here. You can't type that fast, either.
Oh, yeah, Larry's. I'm gonna deliver those hams Sunday to Schultes. Melody will miss those. Got a letter from Missouri Association of Counties. Anybody want to be an officer? That large director?
That's her, the photos, I think.
Just came in the mail, just came in the mail.
You're never gonna have them sign over that Corvette, are you? That might get you a little jail time.
No, I know.
You can go to Osage County and get a license.
I might just paint my T-bird red.
You guys get this invitation to this Cartwright Business and Technology Park up at Columbia Regional Airport? Guess that's near that Larry Potter builds.
All right, Marvin, did we just get that today, yesterday?
I'm not sure.
All right, I might still be sitting on my desk.
Okay, anything else?
So you're still going to the meeting Thursday then, or the, was it MSP?
I guess.
Okay. They sent us a media cancellation, Mike, and that just removed us.
I know, that's.
Thanks, I posted, so. And they did say at the end of the year, they should have something done with the court feasibility study, but that's if they go through, if it makes it through phase one and goes to phase two. Otherwise, by like December first, we'll know if it's even gonna be going to phase two. That was a twenty minute answer, too. So when are y'all gonna be done? That was the only question I asked them. I was gonna be nice. Twenty minutes later, I said, when are y'all gonna be done? Short answer. That's all I got for right now.
Alright, I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section six, ten point oh two one, other revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, sub one, and real estate, sub two.
Seven.
Roll call. Yes. Yes.
Jeff, Chris.
Yes.